I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of November 12, 2009. Will the Minutetaker please call the roll?
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Cadella. Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated October 22, 2009. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question, Alderman Police?
On section three, the very last sentence, says, "I requested additional information on some process." I don't remember asking for that. But it's okay, I mean.
On section three...
It's, I think it's with the due process of Alderman Wesley, E. Wesley had asked if we can shut him down, and the mayor stated, "No, there's a due process, you have to follow along." And then it says, "I asked for additional information on that process," but I never asked. It's a minor.
Okay, so you are no longer looking, if you did ask, or it, I guess to put the record straight, you don't need any more additional information, correct?
No, no, I didn't ask.
Okay. Well, the Minutetaker, please strike that sentence. Then, any other questions on this? Motion passes. No, actually, all in favor. I didn't call you all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on the mid-year financial review. And with that, I'll ask our Finance Director, Mr. Wilson, to take us through.
Thank you Chairman Winger. Actually, I'd like to do number four first, the audit report, if possible.
Sure, so without objection, we will skip to item number five, report and recommendation on the mid-year financial review. I'm sorry, I'm off tonight. Okay. Item number four, presentation of audit report.
Thank you Chairman Winger. Yes, and to do the presentation of the audit report, we have partnered with Wolf &amp; Company, Mr. Mike Cinco here with us this evening. I'd like to speak just a couple of minutes on some highlights out of the audit for us, and then answer any questions, comments, concerns, et cetera, that you may have that either of us could answer for you on behalf of the city in the audit. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Cinco.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the council and the mayor for having us in this year to conduct the audit. The audit, the first-year audits typically sometimes run pretty rough. I can honestly say that this was one of the best first-year audits that we've conducted. I want to thank Brad and his staff for providing us the support throughout the process. It's been a pretty seamless project this year. As you can see by your audit date, which was September 30th, which is actually a month ahead of typical filing time for villages and cities that have been around for a long time. So you were far ahead of that, so congratulations on that. What I want to do is just indicate to you, we have certain standards, certain language that we have to follow, and we conduct procedures, internal control analysis. We've gone through all of those procedures, documented everything. And on page, page one, you'll see in the financial report that we have issued a clean opinion, which indicates in all material respect, you've complied with all of the professional language required by auditing standards and generally accepted accounting principles under governmental accounting standards. So, and some of the other high-level areas that I want to point out is on page 11 of the report.
Which, are you going to do this, take one?
Yes, I am.
That's page, page?
Page 11? The first number on the top right, the extreme right, you have your cash position as of the end of the fiscal year, which is $24,384,293. Everyone identify that? Was actually $22,455,445 in the prior year, which represents a 9% increase. Moving down the page, in the first column, under governmental activities, on the same page 11, you have, what we like to focus on, and what most of the governmental community focuses on, is an unrestricted net asset. What I referred to was your cash position. Your cash position is the cash in the bank as of the end of the fiscal year. You have certain liabilities and commitments that you've made. What this number, the unrestricted net asset, which is $15,268,544, is your unencumbered, unrestricted, available-for-spending position, which is actually a nice hefty increase of 19% from the prior year, where it was at $12,824,248. And moving right over to the next column, you'll see the $9,595,555 in the business-type activities, which is an increase of 23% over the prior year. So there's a consistent tone here, and based upon the current economic conditions, I think that the council, and the mayor, and Brad, and everyone deserves, and on the residents, kudos for this type of performance, because we perform, Wolf &amp; Company as a general, we perform a lot of these village and city reviews, audits. We also do the audit of DuPage County, and we see a lot of folks just kind of getting by right now with the economic situation. So you've guys done a wonderful job from year to year, from a year-to-year perspective. Moving forward, on page 11, your investment in capital assets actually increased. If you look in the first column, under governmental activities, down in the net asset section, towards the bottom of the page, you'll see a number $68,95180, investment in capital assets, net of related debt. That was actually an increase in the current year, which indicates to the residents that you're investing in your community and driving money back into community and making this a better place. So I always like to focus on that number, which is another positive. Let's move over to page 13, which shows your current year results. Moving over into governmental activities, if you look straight down, the third number from the bottom is your change in net assets, which really, if you equate that to the commercial side, it's your net income or net loss. And you actually have a net income equated to the commercial side, or a change in net assets to the positive of $4,274,858, which is actually an increase of 36% from the prior year, which was $3,138,702 in the prior year fiscal ending. Moving over to the business type, $1,83661 is another increase of 16%. We turn one more page, another, and one of the last key figures that we look at from a municipal perspective is the general fund. You have all your other funds, which are typically committed to or committed for debt service and special revenue. You always have those earmarked to pay for something. The general fund shows what you really have available, unencumbered. So the general fund fund balance, in the first column there, all the way down, the undesignated and unrestricted, unreserved fund balance is $10,657,133. Now, don't get this confused, if you see other presentations, with the total fund balance of $11,001,426. So in future, I think there may be a presentation where you're giving with the total fund balance. I'm just quoting the unrestricted fund balance. If you look up, you'll have your prepaid items in your inventory, which actually match your assets. So the $10,657 is actually an increase of 19% from the prior year within your general fund. Another, another key, and a GAFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, who issues you your report in financial reporting, which I wouldn't see why we wouldn't get it in the current year, which you've gotten in the previous years. They recommend that you have at least, at a minimum, two months of annualized expenditures within your general fund in your fund balance. Where you're at is your, your over a year worth of accumulated assets in your, in your general fund fund balance. So you're well above, I'm making reports to other folks that are, that some are even below the two months, or right above the two months, right at the two months. You're one of the few municipalities that is well above that, that minimum threshold. So from our perspective, you're a great client to say that we work with, so be proud of that. Moving on, if we go to the last, another number that I want to highlight is the police... Page 21. Is the, is the police pension total assets? There has been a decrease in this number. This is the only number that represents a decrease, but it's really tied directly to what's going on in the economy and the, and the investments that you make. So the market's down, therefore, therefore the assets in the pension fund are down. They're down about 12%, which quite frankly, isn't as bad as we may see some of the other pension funds take. Your pension fund...
Excuse me, Alderman Police?
Well, I was gonna wait till you finish.
Oh, I thought you had your hand raised.
Yes.
But this, this is, I take it, okay, it's for the year ending April 30th, 2009, but the market has had some kind of turnaround this year, so...
Correct, correct. That should, that should go back, yes. You'll see that probably increase significantly over, over the future, in the, in the subsequent period.
This coming year, okay.
Right, but what I want to highlight is, is, don't just focus on the decrease there. I want us to make sure that this, there's actually a positive spin to this, is that the funding level of your pension fund is actually at 76.51%, which is a lot higher than we typically see. Some of these, some of these pension funds are funded at a, at a 30% or a 40% actuarial level. And I'm trying to find the actual page, I'm, Brad, can you? If you turn to page 46, now keep your hand on page 21, because you may want to flip back to that. But page 46 highlights your funded ratio. And if you look on the, down the second one, not your Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, but your police pension fund, the first line, the fourth column over, shows your funded ratio at 76.51%. And again, comparatively speaking, it's, it's much higher than, than what I typically see. And then one last comment with the general fund. We did see an increase in revenue from approximately $10.9 million to $12.3 million, and, and a decrease in expenditures, which indicates that you're controlling the expenses, which is good. You also have an offsetting increase in your revenue, which obviously resulted in the increase in your general fund. So the clean opinion, the seamless process, the strong financial position that you folks are in. Quite frankly, we are privileged and honored to work with the city. We appreciate the opportunity, and I guess I'll open it up to any questions that, that you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Back to the police pension. I was looking at the trend on that from 2003 through 2006, which was trending down, and then jumped back up again in 2007. Can you account for why it was trending down? Were we not putting enough money into it, or was it some draw in the system? Unexpected draw, or?
No, I can't, I mean, can't place my hand, I am not aware, with us coming in this year, I'm not, I'm not familiar with any specific reason why it would have been trending down other than just, just the investments that, that the pension...
All right, thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have actually two questions. I was very impressed with the report that you sent out, that we need to make a couple of changes in our, your little tiny book here.
Okay.
I, I was quite surprised that we only have four corrections that you recommended we should make, which I was very pleased with that. The one that really concerns me, and, and maybe this might not be the point, is the safeguarding of confidential information. That, as a council member, that does bother me with that one. So I, have we secured those documents? Is that corrected on this issue?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, upon receiving even the draft version of this report from them a number of weeks ago, we went through and changed our procedures to eliminate this, what they were speaking to there with the phone transactions. We modified our procedures. We've actually purchased a new shredder that basically turns everything into pulp instead of the strip, because now with the computer technology to recreate strip shredding machines and stuff like that, it wasn't, wasn't good enough for us. So we got a Level 4 micro-cut that turns them into little eighth-inch-by-eighth-inch squares effectively. We shred everything now that has anybody's name, phone number, credit card number, anything that might be deemed to be private information or something like that. We do shred upon completion of the transaction. So we have corrected that measure, even before the final version of this report was out. We took corrective action on that.
Okay, may I do one other question?
Yes.
The number one capital assessment. We recommend the city invest in capital assessment software. Could you highlight us on what, what that details, or? I mean, do we not have the software in place now with the money that we just paid for software for the finance?
Yeah, currently, we track, we track the fixed assets in Excel, because on the old software, it didn't have the functionality to do it within the software itself. So we did everything in Excel, which, I don't know, maybe Mike could give me a better answer. I believe that's not uncommon at all for places to do it in Excel.
So if, if that is the case, why is this being brought to recommend correction on that?
Our best practice, excuse me, best practice is that you conduct an annual inventory. Best practice is that you have a system that integrates with your expenditure. So once you make an expenditure, you place a threshold on it. You incorporate data into your fixed assets. Again, these are just best practices. You have to weigh the cost to benefit. So if, if you feel comfortable with what's being conducted, and, and it's adequate enough, then, then the cost may far outweigh the benefit of that. So we are just, in this letter, again, just giving you best practices to say, this is what we may see, could be an enhancement. You may or may not expect, or want to adopt this policy.
And I did speak to Mr. Kramer on this, about some of the assets that don't have numbers. All the vehicles have the unit numbers on them and stuff, like the generators, things like that, that don't have numbers particularly right now. We've been in preliminary conversations with a way to track those better, just for accountability purposes, both for my end and for their end of the garage and things of that nature. So it is something we're working on, and we are going to do a cost-benefit analysis on it and see where it goes. But there will be some change, nothing radical though, from current practice.
Okay, but I will, I will tell you that this is, my hat goes off of the Finance Department on this, that we only have physically correct four, four things, and we already did the one. So I, I commend the Finance Department in that perspective. I did read part of the report, I did not complete the whole report. I was very impressed with the report. There's a couple of things that, I have some questions, but I could get that from, from Brad. But I was very impressed with, with your firm on this process, knowing that it's the first year, so. Thank you.
Alderman Police?
On page 46, where it showed the, the police pension, what about the IMRF? That one's showing 67.34%.
It's very similar, and the same, my comments were...
Related to the pension overlay with the IMRF. It's, it's the same time. I would not be concerned at all with the 67% funded ratio. Again, there's a lot of folks that are, that are well, well below that, based upon what occurred. And you'll see that rise in the next year as well. So I, I would not let that alarm you at all.
Thank you. Alderman Shaki?
Yes, just a quick one, the whistleblower policy.
Sure.
When can we expect, I'm waiting for Brad to come back. Just wondering what kind of timetable we can look in, forward to for the policy on personnel manual for whistleblower.
You know, I forwarded that to HR, Ms. Lisa Jepson, and she's promised me to look into this. So I'll have to follow up with her to see when she's, where she's got that programmed on her calendar right now.
So are we thinking two months, six months, what?
I can find out. I mean, if it's something we want to, we want to really get done, I can, I can get on her, and we can get this to you sooner than later. Sure.
Thank you.
In all, all of these comments, based upon, there's a, there's a language, SAS 112, that required us to communicate these to you folks. And, and all of these comments, just to let you know, next year will appear again. And we, you will give a current status of where these comments are in the following year. Once they're cured in the following year, then they'll go away for the subsequent year.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Going back to page 46, like he was questioning, could you say that that could have been, again, bad investments into the market? The way we, we lost? I know the state requires you have to put so much in this account and all that. Being that low, could you consider that possibly that's the reason why the market went down? That that is a shortfall?
Possibly. Possibly. I mean, obviously, in these funds, both the IMRF and the police pension, you're restricted to the types of investments that you're making. So I think it takes some comfort in the fact that you're not out there making derivative investments that are having, you know, a very risky, risky position, where you're hedging certain things. I think there's certain restrictions to that. So, so rest assured that, that that's not taking place here, but...
And just to add to that, I don't think we're ever going to have a correlation between the two funds. If I just look historically, some years, the IMRF was 10% higher than the police pension, and now vice versa, so I think they're going to fluctuate, not in tandem. Any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to look at some of the statistical data. Can I direct your attention to page 104, because I have a couple of questions? 104. Which is the biggest property taxpayers in the, in the city of Wooddale? Most of the names are familiar to me, and I understand them, but there's a couple that jumped out. Parkway Bank, as far as I know, that's just a leasehold of a 5,000 or 10,000 square foot in the shopping center, and they don't own any property. And also the grocery store, although they may pay property taxes as part of their lease. But Super Value would not be one of our, would certainly not be our second-biggest property tax bill. Those two don't seem to be fit on the list. The others all seem very appropriate.
Yeah, we can take a look at it certainly. You know, the Super Value, and if they don't own them, then, you know, certainly my apologies. You know, with the warehouse they have on Wooddale Road, and then the store they have here.
That Jewel, Super Value, is that the name for Jewel, Asco?
Jewel, it's Jewel.
Okay, but then Parkway Bank, unless they, unless it's trust, and it's property held in trust...
It might be.
Which could be the entire shopping center.
It's the entire shopping center, Save, I think Bentley's, Dunkin' Donuts, and the car wash, maybe. The entire horseshoe.
All right.
Alderman Coles?
I would, I was skeptic on taking on a new company to do this, and I certainly have changed since I read this. I appreciate all the hard work that you did.
Well, thank you, that means a lot.
Okay.
Any other comments?
When it says equalize, it says guide, that's a third of market value, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you very much as well for laying this out in a very clean fashion and going through it with us.
I'll finish, we're gonna get back to you.
Okay, you know, please feel free, Brad, my contact is, feel free to contact me at any time you have questions.
Mr. Wilson, do you need like a formal motion of acceptance on this? Or does that come later, or is there any?
U.S., we would appreciate one. In the past, we have done a motion, it's gone on the, I believe, the consent agenda in years past, just the formal acceptance of the, of the audit. So a motion would be appreciated.
Sure, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the FY ending April 30th, 2009 audit report.
I'll second it.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number five, report and recommendation on the mid-year financial review. And I'll ask Mr. Wilson to take us through that.
Chairman Winger, actually, I'm going to defer for the majority of the talking on this one to manager Douthat. I'll be managing the keyboard.
I want to take a couple of minutes to talk a little bit in a little more detail about the general fund for the fiscal year ending 2009, this past April. Then I want to take some time and talk about our projections for the fiscal year that we're in right now, that end this coming April of 2010. And then our best guess as to where we might be in fiscal year 2011. But you need to realize that when we start to project to where the economy is going to be 18 months from now, it's anything but rocket science. It's what we refer to as a swag estimate. And those of you who don't know what a swag estimate, can ask your counterparts next door to each other, and they'll be able to tell you, but it's not for public consumption. Let me turn, if I could, to page 45 of the audit. And this is a summary of revenues and expenditures for the general fund. The general fund handles our police department, our public works, our streets, our finance, our engineering, our planning and zoning, everything except for water and sewer. That's the gut of the operation, and it's the one that we focus on the most because the services are the most obvious to the residents. And as the auditor mentioned very briefly, what you see here on page 45, and I think everybody's got a copy of that, is an estimate, or an actual recitation of what our budget was, what our actual numbers were, and where we ended up at the end of this past year. We had a final budget, total revenues, which is the first major set of rows, it says total revenues. We had budgeted for this past year of $10.8 million, and we actually collected $12.4 million, a difference of $1,005,000. That's a lot, and I want to talk just a minute about that, and why you see that increase in the revenues. We belong to a consortium called, the acronym is IPBC. It's basically our health insurance cooperative. We're members, along with a number of other cities. And to handle our health insurance premiums, these guys are the consortium through which all of our money runs. We pay them an annual amount, based upon what our estimated premiums ought to be. From that amount, they pay our claims, and anything left over stays in a reserve in our name through IPBC. Over the past number of years, at least 15 years, our claims have been significantly less than our premiums that have been paid. And we've had a reserve building up in IPBC that in addition to building up, we are collecting interest on. And over the past number of years, that reserve had been about $1,500,000. Now, because of the IPBC bylaws, even though that money was technically ours, we weren't allowed to show that as an asset on the books. You can't count it twice, and IPBC... You can't count it twice, and IPBC showed that as an asset on their books, and it wasn't until this past year that they changed their bylaws and allowed us to capture that as an asset. Now, that's not money in our bank right now, that's money still being held by IPBC, but it's in our name, and that's essentially, we have money that we have access to. Now, in the past couple of years, when our health insurance premiums looked to rise, we'd take some of that $1,000,500 cushion, and we'd use that to offset our normal premium increases, so as to smooth out the flow of our premiums. And we used that sort of as a safety net, so that we didn't have to show in our general fund an increase or an uptick in premium costs. We basically pegged the premiums at a flat amount, and anything else we needed, we took out of that money. But that essentially is our money, and for the first time, we've booked that in 2009 as an asset. So that's a one-time asset of money to be paid to us when we need it, if we need it. And at budget time, I think the council needs to have some discussion about what you want to do with that money. Because it's a one-time infusion, I don't think that we ought to just lump it into the general fund as part of the cash balance and use it for operating expenditures, because the general philosophy is, if you've got a one-time revenue coming in, you want to use that for one-time expenditures. We've booked it here as a revenue in 2009, but at budget time, I think we ought to have a conversation about what you might want to do with that money. You want to leave it in your checking account? You want to reserve it for some anticipated expenditure down the line, like maybe a down payment on a sewer plant, or a down payment on the Thorndale planning process, or an enhancement to the money we've set aside for the underpass, or a reserve for future premium increases in health insurance? You've got a wide variety in front of you, in terms of what do you want to do with that money? And I'd just like you to think about that for a couple of months. We've got a million and a half coming in we didn't think about, weren't aware of. What are we going to do with it? For now, we've booked it as an asset, and as a result, that increase in revenues from budget to actual took place. Then if you go down to the next set of rows, total expenditures, we had budgeted $10.5 million for the general fund and expenditures. We spent about $10 million for a positive flow of almost $1,500,000. When you work out all the transfers in and out of other funds, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we had $9.2 million in the bank.